So Mayor Commissioners, this is our mid-year status update. So along with your general fund and our enterprise fund updates, we also do a number of things for mid-year to make sure we're tracking okay. Right? We have our circuit breakers, we have our, you know, check-in on our departmental spend, et cetera. The good news is, you know, there aren't any, there isn't any major in either direction. The bad news is, there isn't anything major. And, you know, we're running kind of flat, but for some timing issues. So that's the good and the bad together because, you know, we'd always love to have more revenue. So I'm going to turn it over to Abby Catell-Jones to start the presentation on general fund.
Okay, before we do that, just want to make note of time to Commissioner Charles Floss and Commissioner Jones Paulson in a little bit later.
Okay.
Thanks, Mayor. Thank you, City Manager. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
All right, so we'll get off with the general fund. Thank you. So we'll go over the statement and talk through some high-level summary before we dive deeper into the analysis that will show as of June. All revenues, as you can see here, all revenues have increased 0.5% or a little over $500,000 when compared to 2023. Compared to budget, we are also performing better. We are $2.2 million above the year-to-date budget or 2.1%. The largest increase, as you can see, is in our income tax category, which is also our largest source of revenue. Income tax is $2.3 million above 2023 or 2.9%. And we'll talk more in detail about income tax in the next slide. Property tax and other taxes also saw an increase. You may recall from her March presentation that property tax and other taxes category was down. And that was due to the pending settlement for the first half of property tax that we were awaiting from the Montgomery County. As of June, we've received that settlement. And so that's why you're seeing that increase. With the property values going up, we're seeing, we're seeing property tax and other taxes going up by 1 million or 24.6% compared to last year's same time. The other notable increase is in other intergovernmental category, which is up 87.5% or $1.2 million. And this is largely due to the timing of casino payment, which we will discuss in detail a little bit later in the presentation. The other thing to note here, which we've been saying all throughout the year, is the local government fund. It has a decline of 100% compared to last year because we haven't received local government fund revenues since August of 2023 due to our pending liability for the, for the photo enforcement fund that the local government fund is being reduced by the state. Based on the projections and looking at the reductions that we're seeing month over month in the local government fund, we expect to fulfill our liability by October of this year. And so for November and December, we expect to see a payment for local government fund this year. The largest... We already talked about that. On the expenditure side, as of June 2024, expenditures were under budget, which means we have a favorable variance by $2.7 million or 2.2%. Expenditures were $5.5 million higher than 2023 amounts. Personnel costs, which is the largest expense on the expenditure side, were $4.1 million under budget and $1.3 million above 2023 amounts. Although there were, there was a 7% wage increase for most employees, we're not seeing that year where year increase. And this is partly due to the absence of lump-sum payment. As you may recall, in 2023, we had a lump-sum payment, which was paid out in January of 2023. As in 2024, we do not have that lump-sum pay. The ongoing vacancies and the delay in police contract is also contributing to not that much increase year-over-year. Compared to budget, contracts and materials and other uses were up $1.2 million. And compared to 2023, contracts and materials and other uses were up $3.4 million or 16.5%. Much of this increase is in various maintenance costs, management and public service contracts, and payments to internal service funds. Investments are shown in the purple section here. And as you can see, investments are front-loaded. We processed most investments in February of 2023 so that we have time for procurement of those capital equipment and projects. At the end of 2024, sources exceeded uses by $8.3 million. And this is largely due to the early funding of investments. And then also, we have a one-time budget solution in our 2024 budget, which is a transfer from the photo enforcement fund into the general fund in the amount of $5 million. That transfer hasn't been processed as of June of 2024. And so that's why we're seeing that large delta between sources over uses. As for the income tax, as I mentioned, it's the largest source of revenue for the general fund. As of June, income tax makes 76% of total revenue in the general fund. And as you can see, net collections for June increased 2.9% and are 2.5% or $2 million above the mid-year chart. With holding collections have climbed 6.8% or $4.6 million over 2023. The 2024 collection growth is largely attributed, and the withholding section is largely attributed to the Five Friday phenomenon. And so in 2024, we have one extra Five Friday month as opposed to 2023. And so that's why we're seeing that big delta year-over-year in the withholding category. On the business profit side, business profit makes up of corporate profits and partnerships. Corporate profits are the larger of the two. And they declined collectively 20.2% or $2.1 million. Corporate profit declined 22.1% and partnership declined 15.1%. And this is a trend that we've been seeing all throughout the year. Payments to individuals or payments by individuals also declined by 5.2% or $203,300 when we compare the information to 2023. Also, just to note, on the refund side, refunds are about the same as where we were last year in 2023. And so you can see in the chart, in the table above, we processed $2.4 million worth of refunds in 2023 for about at the same amount in 2024. And in the chart below, in the bottom page, is where you can see that Five Friday phenomenon. The green and blue highlighted section represents the Five Friday month. And as you can see, 2024, we will have five, total five Friday months as opposed to normally we only have four. The last time when we had the Five Fridays was in 2018. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Jeanette to talk through the revenue categories.
Thank you. I'm going to highlight some of our revenue categories. Abby kind of touched on them a little bit, but I'll go into a little bit more detail. And the first one is property tax. So I'm sure, as you saw, property tax is up just under 25% over 2023. And as you know, so a lot of property values in the area were quite a bit higher than they were last year due to the county's reappraisal or revaluation. So the county auditor conducts a reappraisal of property values every six years. So that's a full-blown reappraisal that occurs, excuse me, every six years. And then in between that period, every three years, there is kind of like a desk audit or reevaluation that occurs. So in 2023 was that revaluation. And during that revaluation, property values actually increased 22.9% from 2023. So this was quite a big increase. But this is still under the peak of prior to the Great Recession in 2006. So in 2023, property values were just slightly over $2 billion in total. They were about $2.1 billion if you go back to 2006. So we're just slightly under where we were. But the delta in terms of where we were from 2023 has, is about 20% higher. And you can really see that significant growth in the bar chart while we are up 24.6% higher in revenue. And then when the rebound was done kind of in 2020, we would have experienced that revenue come in in 2021. It just grew about 6.9%. So you can really see how much more these property values have grown and how much more revenue we're bringing in in 2024. So this growth was kind of offset a little bit. We'll see at the bottom, the hotel lodging tax. So that did fall off partway through 2023. So if you remember, the convention center, that transitioned to the Miami Valley Convention Facilities Authority. And that happened in about April of 2021. So you'll see a little bit of revenue still come in in 2021. And then it has truly fallen off in terms of what we've received in 2022 to now to 2024. So a slight change in terms of hotel lodging tax, but really you're seeing a big gap in growth in terms of property values due to the property revaluation that occurred in 2023. Other charges for services, so this is kind of a catch-all category, so to speak. It includes a lot of the charges that we have. So overall, other charges for services is down slightly, about 7%. About $800,000, I'll talk about a couple of areas where they are down. So the first one, you will see the largest dollar value decrease is in your parking charges. So that is down just over $160,000 or about 15.5%. So some of this is down because of the elimination of parking charges at our municipal garage for employees. And additionally, we're seeing fewer events and fewer parking charges go through at the Oregon Garage near the convention center. So those two kind of combined are driving down some of that year-over-year growth. We may actually decline in terms of parking charges for the city. The second largest dollar value decline, you see in that police charges line. So that is down $104,000 or $500, just under 20% year-over-year. And so there's a little bit of nuance in here, which I'm sure you're not surprised about. So what is in the police charges, those are typically charges for either contracted or non-contracted lease overtime work. So I'm sure you're aware, with some higher attrition levels, lower staffing levels, there's less time for them to do overtime contracted and non-contracted work. Obviously, if they're going to do overtime, it's going to go to first response emergencies. And then they would be able to do some of this non-contracted and contracted work. So some of that would include like being at scenes for the construction on highway or if they needed to do, like be on a specialized unit, like a PA unit or a drug unit, something like that. So if there's, they have a little bit fewer time to do that overtime contracted work here. So that's why you are seeing that decline. The other reduction you'll see down is in the plans development and exam fees. And that is down about 41%. So that was starting to peak kind of post-COVID when there was a lot of activity in the area, construction activity, and it's starting to kind of eke back down a little bit. And then the other kind of three areas that are going to get lumped together. So your indirect cost reimbursements, your miscellaneous charges, and your municipal court charges, they're down just about 2.2% in total. There is good news. So all of these declines have been offset by an increase in recreation charges. So that is up just over 59%. So some of what we're seeing with the recreation charges, so that just over $200,200, $600,000 that has brought in, it's kind of returning back to what it was pre-COVID. So prior to COVID in 2019, it was about $222,000, $220,000. So we're seeing higher kind of summer camp registrations. So we're seeing your program registrations. And that's why you're seeing the recreation charges are kind of starting to eke back up. So that is kind of offsetting some of those. And then other intergovernmental. So other intergovernmental, as you probably noticed from the statement, it is up about 87.5%. And part of that, as Abby kind of talked through, so the largest portion of these other intergovernmental revenues is income taxes. So you'll see kind of from 2020 to 2022, we have consistently kind of put in two of the four, so we get a payment every quarter. So two payments were received as of June through that period. But at this point last year, in 2023, we'd only received one of those quarterly payments. So that quarterly payment did not come in until about August. So we didn't see that normalize until August in terms of those two quarterly payments. And you are seeing truthfully, it's down, down. We did get the, we did get the quarterly payment of about a little over $1 million last year in August. But that is why in terms of percentage of dollar value are seeing down I guess year-over-year because we see the two quarters in 2024, we're going to be only receiving one quarter in 2023. And then the other big area I'll talk through, you're probably seeing a liquor and beer permit revenue line. That is almost 75, 175%. So there's some little nuances in here. So every year at the state level for liquor or beer permit licenses, so the timing in terms of when people can renew their license kind of changes. There's three specific districts that they identify throughout Ohio. And depending upon where you live or your location is of your business, that's when your date is, when your renewal date, and that kind of consistently changes. So it's just the timing in terms of when we got those receipts this year versus last year. So at this point, we received our revenue earlier in the year. Last year, we didn't receive the bulk of our revenue until about later in the year. So that's where you're seeing that big difference year-over-year from 2023 to 2024. Some big picture overall revenue trends for you. So as Abby mentioned, in terms of income tax, so overall income tax, we saw an increase this, this year from 2023 of about 2.9%. When we look back to 2020, so comparing where we are in 2024 to 2020, income tax has grown 22.4% in that period. You'll notice kind of in the bar graph, so the blue is the income tax. That went up 22.4%. And then the green is all other revenue categories. So all other revenue categories from 2020 have gone up just 1.8%. So you can really see that reliance on income tax as a portion of our total revenue, especially in the bottom chart. At this point of the year in 2024, income tax is 76.5% of total revenue. So you can really see how much our total revenue is reliant on that income tax portion and how small a portion the all other revenue. Some of that and all of the revenue is that nuance with the local government fund. Since we haven't received any at this point last year, that's why that 1.8% is kind of low. Some other areas where we saw some kind of big variances from 2020. So property and other taxes, as we talked through the property revaluation that occurred. Property taxes have grown from 2020 at least about 40%. And then EMS, EMS run or EMS fees are up due to a higher level of runs. We still continue to see a higher level of runs. That really kind of peaked after the pandemic, but we're still seeing higher EMS runs. And that is driving up revenue of about $1 million in 2020. And then in the other revenue category, there is a decline from 2020. But in 2020, one of the big revenue sources we received in other revenue was the workers' comp distribution during the pandemic. There was a big distribution that went out to a lot of municipalities to kind of help us through the COVID pandemic. We haven't received another one. So that is why the other revenue category, if you were to look at it from five years ago, was down about 41.6%. As for revenue.
Back to Abby. So next we'll talk through the expenditure trends. First up, we have personnel costs. Personnel costs increased 1.8% or slightly under $1.3 million when we compare the personnel cost to 2023. And that's, that increase is largely associated with the normal wage increases. That's offset by the turnover and the sustained vacancies that we're seeing throughout this year, or I should say, for the past couple of years. Civilian wages in the personnel categories increased 2.7% or a little under $600,000. And that's largely due to the wage and step increases that we are, we have in our 2024's budget. Civilian overtime was up 18.4% or under $31,300. This is largely due to the continued vacancies that we're seeing in our waste collection team. And also, we have an increased need for paramedics and EMTs in fire department. This is due to that additional engine that is cross-staffed with two medics. That the reason why they're seeing the overtime, increase overtime in the fire department civilian section. Swarm wages were lower by 2.7% or a little under $700,000. And this is largely in the police department because of the continued vacancies that we're experiencing for the past few years. Swarm overtime, on the other hand, was up 23.2% or $661,000. And this is largely driven by the minimum staffing requirement with having an additional fire engine in service as well as the higher-than-expected attrition that we have experienced in the fire department. So for context, in the fire department, 2024's budget includes us attriting 18 firefighters for the entire year of 2024. For the first six months of 2024, we have attrited 12, which is a 66% attrition rate. And because of that, we are having to fill slots with overtime. And that's why we're seeing that increase in the swarm overtime in the fire department. On the contracts and materials side, excluding other used transfers to the capital equipment and capital projects, contracts and material costs were up 12.6% or $2.6 million. There are three big categories in contracts and materials that are seeing a $8 increase. The biggest increase is in management and public service contracts. They're up almost 40% or nearly $1 million. And this is driven by the timing of payment for the regional dispatch center. So 2023 had one fewer payment as of mid-year as opposed to 2024 has that one more payment. And that's why we're seeing that big increase in management public service contracts. For the maintenance costs, they were up almost nearly 40% or a little over, or nearly $900,000 when we compare the data to 2023. And this is largely due to the increased cost for computer security and then various costs associated with, and various different department costs associated with the maintenance of facilities. Payments to internal service funds were also up by 31.1% or $845,000. And this is largely due to the increased fleet repair costs that we've been experiencing. We have seen the same trend throughout this year. The trend has started actually later last year and has continued as we have increased need for repairing our current fleet. Supplies and material costs increased by $348,300. And this is largely impacted by the need for supplies in the police department. The increases in contracts and material were offset by decreases in a couple categories, one being the utility cost. Utility costs were down $531,400 in 2024. And this is due to the one-time cost for LED upgrade of street lighting that we experienced in 2023. This was a one-time expense that occurred in 2023 and is not occurring in 2024. That's why we're seeing that decline in 2024. And then the other category is professional services, which is up $179,600. This reduction is related to the decrease in the general funds portion of the IT consulting services cost. And so we were able to shift some of the IT consulting costs from the general fund to the photo enforcement fund. And that's why we're seeing that decline in the general fund. As for the big picture on the expenditure trend, for the five-year period from 2020 to 2024, collectively, personnel and contracts and material have increased by over $15.8 million or 19.1%. Of of that $15.8 million, $9.2 million is in personnel cost. And this is largely attributed to the growth in personnel cost, which is the wage and line movement that we have experienced year-over-year. Contracts and material expenses increased 37.5% when we looked at the information and compared to 2022. And that is amount to $6.5 million. Contracts and material expenses were lower in 2020 as the city limited expenditures to essential goods and services in response to the COVID-19 pandemic. So 2020, excuse me, contracts and materials were much lower in comparison to what we have today in 2024. These pandemic-related supply chain delays that we experienced in 2021 and to certain degree continued in 2022 also suppressed that contracts and material cost in 2021 and 2022. The cost increased drastically into 2023 and 2024, not only because of the normal contracts and material expenses that were suppressed during 2020, 2021, and 2022, but also because of the fact that we've added some additional cost. A couple of the example of that additional cost are the core security services, the contract that we have, the sheriff, contract that we have with the sheriff's office that is adding the cost in 2024. And also, we have higher maintenance and fleet repair costs that we just talked about in 2024. So that's why we're seeing that growth in 2024, that tremendous growth in 2024 when we compare the information to 2020. Additionally, the continued inflationary pressures and the fulfillment of delayed order, as we talked about, the pandemic-related supply chain delays has attributed to this growth in contracts and material over the past five years. And just real quickly, the chart below shows the, and the chart title is incorrect. It's actually contracts and material as a percentage of total general fund expenditure. You can see contracts and material, they're a bigger portion of the total expenditures in 2020, 2021, and 2022. And that exactly is the reason why we're seeing that because of the fact that we had suppressed those contracts and material expenses in 2020, somewhat in 2021 and 2022. And so as we picked up those contracts and material expenses, the contracts and material as a percent of total general fund expenditures has gone down. This is our daily recovery plan update. And as of July 24 of 2024, total dating recovery and awarded contracts totals to $4.6 million. And so far, we have spent $23.1 million. So in the improving our neighborhood category, we've spent $8.4 million as of July 2024. That amounts to 15.2% of total expenses in this category. For enhancing critical city services, so far we've spent a little over $400,000, which is about 2% of the total allocation for this category. In supporting black and brown businesses, we spent almost $2.8 million, which is 36.2% of the total allocation. In catalyzing economic recovery, we spent the entire amount, $7 million. And then for aiding communities, small businesses and small business recovery, the total spent to date is nearly $4.5 million, which is 64% of the total allocation. And as the city manager mentioned in her opening remarks, which is the mid-year status update. As a result of the 2014 charter amendment that instituted our policy budget, the city commission adopted a section 49B, 242 of the RCGO that prescribes prior to commencement of budget process for the coming fiscal year, the city manager shall present to the commission a status report on the current budget plan. And so in addition to the regular monthly update And so in addition to the regular monthly update covering the general fund management statement. The mid-year update includes the review of the, uh, revenue circuit breaker and interview of the department variance to the budget. And so this is our circuit breaker, um, revenue circuit breaker measures the spread of data. And helps us understand on average how far away each data point is from the mean value. Um, it signaled when revenues are significantly below their historical averages. For our, our model, our average or mean is for the previous five years, which includes twenty nineteen to twenty twenty three. Um, and these are the same categories that we saw in our short statement, um, in the second slide. According to the imperial rule, in a Roma distribution, about sixty eight percent of values will be within one standard deviation. About ninety five percent of the values will be within two standard deviation and almost seventy nine percent of the value will be within three standard deviation. For our purpose, we're using one standard deviation and two standard deviation with one standard deviation signaling a warning sign. And two standard deviation indicating a high level of monitoring and or corrective actions should be taken. And as you can see here, um, the other charges, charges for services category is failing the one standard deviation test. And this is largely due to the, what Jeanette mentioned earlier. The other charges for services category has a lower revenue in all other charges for services category except one. Um, which was recreation charges. Um, local government fund, uh, is failing both, uh, one standard deviation test and the two standard deviation test. And that's because of the fact that we have not received any revenue for local government fund in twenty twenty four. Um, the other category, other revenue category, um, is failing the one standard deviation test. And this is largely due to twenty twenty having higher revenue. Um, in twenty twenty, um, because of the pandemic, we received a total of three Bureau of Workers' Compensation rebates. Um, and that was to help boost the economy due to the pandemic. As of June, one of those three rebates, um, uh, was booked by the city. And that is increasing the mean or the average, um, for this category resulting in a fail for that category at one standard deviation. And so nothing to concern here, um, we have, um, a some timing issue. And, um, uh, because of the lack of that P W P C rebate, we're seeing that, that, that fail for those three categories. Um, in the one standard deviation and one fail in the, uh, two standard deviation test. This is our departmental variance at midpoint, um, total general fund expenditures and standard accounts for. Um, fifty two point five five percent of the annual budget. Uh, most departments are performing within expected variance threshold with the exception of fire information technology. Issue nine, um, and income tax. The variance experienced by fire department is largely due to the, uh, higher overtime costs that we've talked about. Um, they are experiencing higher overtime costs for the first half of the year. Um, we graduated twenty four recruits as of June, so we should start to see the decline in that overtime for the second half of the year. Um, for the I T department, the variance is outside of the expected threshold. Um, that's largely because of the timing of payment for the cost related to the technology maintenance. Um, forty six percent of I T's total budget is in contracts and materials. Um, it is largely spent towards technology subscription services and maintenance costs. Um, which are somewhat front-loaded, and that's why we're seeing that increased percentage at mid-year. Non-departmental, um, excuse me, issue nine, um, and income tax are seeing that bigger variance. And that's largely because of the, uh, front-loading of investments, uh, that we have for the first half of the year. Um, as we continue to towards the, uh, remainder of the year, we will start to see normalize, see those two category normalize. So for preliminary twenty twenty four year-end projections, um, overall revenues are performing over budget. And are slightly over year-to-date actuals when we compare the information to twenty twenty three. Uh, specifically, income tax has outperformed year-to-date expectation. And that's largely because of what we talked about, that Five Friday phenomenon, um, with withholdings. Um, while collections from business profits and individuals experienced a decline for the first half of the year. The threat of revenue loss from work from home still exists, as does the continued uncertainty around the economic slowdown. Expenditures will likely accelerate in the second half of the year. Um, and that's due to the staffing challenges that we, we are experiencing in various different departments. Um, along with increased cost, uh, but nonetheless, we are expected to be within budget at the end of the year. At mid-year point, we expect to end twenty twenty four with a balanced budget. Um, and the ability to weather the inflationary cost increases that we have experienced over the last couple of years. With inflationary cost increases, rising personnel costs, um, and the economic vulnerability of income tax revenue along with a possible recession. The twenty twenty five budget must be managed prudently, um, especially given the expiration of our funding at the end of twenty twenty four. Um, we know that our, our funding is coming to an end, um, uh, at the end of twenty twenty four. We have been able to manage and balance the budget, um, so far for the past few years utilizing the upper funding. But it is coming to an end at the end of twenty twenty four, um, so we must manage our twenty twenty five budget prudently. Um, and make sure that we have a balanced budget in twenty twenty five in the absence of that. Um, here is, uh, employment information, um. Uh, and this shows the information from the site which occurred in February of twenty twenty. So in February of twenty twenty, we had three hundred and ninety two, six hundred employment, um. And from February to April, uh, when we saw the effects of the pandemic. Um, the region lost about sixty thousand nine hundred or fifteen point five percent of the job base. Um, fifty eight thousand eight hundred jobs have been added back since April of twenty twenty, um, and which are only twenty one hundred lower than the February peak. Um, next we have the employment by, um, various, uh, job categories. And this data on this chart is not seasonally adjusted, so there is a bit of a, bit of a difference between the two charts. Um, these jobs are. Can you guys still hear me?
Yes.
So we're comparing the same thing here, um, except for that nuance that these are not seasonally adjusted as opposed to the previous chart was seasonally adjusted. Um, these are the jobs that have been added back since the peak, which was in February of twenty twenty. Um, the data is not necessarily for Dayton, this is Dayton M S A, which includes Miami, Montgomery and Greencamp. Um, and as you can see on this chart, um, six out of the ten categories or industries are still lagging behind the February peak. Um, professional and business services are down zero point six percent. Um, information, um, has the largest decline, it's down by twenty four point seven percent. Um, manufacturing is down by four point three percent, government is down two point two percent. Um, education combined with health is down zero point seven percent and financial activity sector is down eight point three percent. The largest increase. The largest increase, um, here is in construction category, uh, which is up almost sixteen percent. When we, when we compare the data to February of twenty twenty, um, and followed by the leisure and hospitality category. Excuse me, which is up twelve point three percent compared to twenty twenty peak. So here are our indicators, um. When looking at the economic indicators, all signs are pointing towards a slowing down of the economy. The first chart shows the job opening rate across the United States. The national job opening rate as of May of twenty twenty four is four point nine percent, as you can see in that red text in the top corner. Um, while Ohio's job opening rate is at four point three percent, uh, which is one of the lowest in the country. Um, you can see that in the scale, in the chart, in the bottom. Um, four point six percent and below is the lowest, and Ohio falls within that category at four point three percent. The chart below shows the C P I in Midwest region, um, the C P I for all items was two point five percent higher than June of twenty twenty three. Um, although higher, the growth has been much slower for the past twelve months. Over the years, um, prices for food rose one point seven percent and energy decreased by zero point eight percent. And this is largely due to the lower prices for gasoline, which was offset by the rising prices for electricity costs and natural gas. Minus food and energy, all other items, two point nine percent. Um, and so that chart also shows that, um, slow, low growth, um, in C P I, which is pointing towards that slowing down of the economy. Um, the, uh, chart in the top right-hand corner, which is the G D P. Um, real G D P increased at two point eight percent in the second quarter of this year. This is the first estimate and it is subject to change. Um, the second estimate is based on more, uh, complete data, which will be released on August twenty ninth of twenty twenty four. Um, according to the advanced estimate released by the U S Bureau of Economic Analysis, the real G D P rose one point four percent in the first quarter. Which compared to the third and the fourth quarter of twenty twenty three was lower by one point six percent or one point eight percent. The Bureau of Economic Analysis is attributing the slight acceleration in the second quarter of twenty twenty four. To upturn in private inventory investment and an acceleration in consumer spending. Which was partly offset by the downturn in residential fixed investment. Um, and then, uh, the last chart shows the Ohio's unemployment rate when we look at the seven largest city in Ohio. Um, you can see Dayton has one of the highest unemployment rate, um, as of June of twenty twenty four. Uh, Dayton's unemployment rate is six point eight percent, um, compared to last time, same time, um, in June of twenty twenty three. Dayton's unemployment rate was at five percent, so we are seeing that increase in unemployment rate year over year. Now, Toledo saw a bigger increase, um, they were at four point seven percent and they're at six point seven percent. So they saw a two percent increase, um, while Dayton and Cincinnati, they both saw that one percent eight increase compared to twenty twenty two. Um, to round out, uh, general funds twenty twenty four, um, highlights as of June. Absence of, uh, an additional Five Friday payroll month, revenues continued. Stagnantly in the first six months when compared to the same period in twenty twenty three. With all but four revenue categories realizing a lower performance. Um, as we saw, personnel costs were four point one million or five point two percent of the year-to-date budget. Um, and this is largely attributed to the continued vacancies, um, uh, specifically vacancies that we're seeing in the police department. Contracts and material and other uses were up sixteen point, point five percent or three point four million dollars. And this is largely due to the increased cost as supply chain issues have eased in the, um, later part of last year and this year. Um, and this is combined with the inflationary cost increases, which is what's adding to this, um, increase year over year in the contracts and material and other uses category. For the first half of twenty twenty four, uses exceeded sources by eight point three million dollars. Um, and as we talked about, this is largely due to the front-loading of investment, um, which we do annually. Um, uh, it allows us to, uh, fund these investments, um, and ensure that we have timely bidding occurring. Um, for the capital project and capital equipment. Um, along with, uh, the front-loading of investment, uh, the other thing, as we mentioned earlier. The one-time cash transfer from the photo enforcement fund, um, which we are using to balance it in twenty twenty four. Um, had not occurred as of June of twenty twenty four, it did occur in July of twenty twenty four, so you will see that in the next month's statement. Um, and that eight point three million dollar will go down by that five million dollars. Um, with the continued rising expenses, um, we must be prudent in monitoring our general fund budget. Um, as we continue to see the revenues evolve year over year for the past. Um, year twenty twenty three, we saw a flat revenue performance, almost flat revenue performance. And, um, that is the case if it wasn't for that Five Friday phenomenon, um, we. We would have seen a flat revenue performance in, um, as of June of twenty twenty four. Um, and so, um, our revenues are stagnant for the most part, um, but our expenditures aren't. Expenditures, specifically personnel costs, which is the, um, highest cost for the general fund is continuing to rise year over year. So we must be prudent in monitoring our budget, um, and making sure that we have a structural balance, uh, moving forward.
Question?
Okay, questions, come, questions?
All good?
Yeah, thank you.
All right, so a lot of information, I know, okay. So we will then next go on to our water and sanitary sewer fund update. We'll bring forward Powell and Miss Crist. I'm sure your mic is on, Mike.
Like down by the minus nine.
All right, Mike, Rick, Department of Water, that and Chris, with us, our financial officer. Uh, so going through, I'll, I'll tell you right now, uh, while it was an exciting quarter operationally, the numbers are not exciting. Uh, everything is this sort of status quo, right, which that's, uh, we got the, the funds come in, the funds go out about where we expected, but. So we'll kind of go through them, so just kind of looking through the numbers here, uh, looking at, uh, revenues. The revenues were up about three million, uh, ten point four percent compared to the same quarter last year. When we break that down by city customers and other jurisdictions and other charges for services. City customers were below the forecast, uh, about two hundred and twenty four thousand dollars. And we had an eight point two percent increase over quarter, the same quarter last year, which was about one point one million. Uh, other jurisdictions were, uh, hundred and twenty thousand below the budget. And that equated to ten points two percent revenue increase over the same quarter last year at one point two million. And other charges for services were up, uh, six hundred and sixty eight thousand dollars. And that was quite a bit, and it was, we'll talk about it a little bit, uh, but some process improvements and also increased lime sales is what was really behind that, that big increase. Uh, expenses up point eight percent, about two hundred and eighty thousand dollars over the same quarter from twenty twenty three. And, uh, when we look at increases in personnel, contracts and materials, uh, equipment purchases, those things contributed to that. Also, there was an offset with, uh, the capital cash, capital cash transfers, uh, and debt service, uh, with timing related to that. Uh, so personnel costs, if you look at the number there, they were up six point one percent, contraction materials up seven point five percent. And, uh, that was a lot due to the chemicals and some upgrade that we needed to do to our SCADA system for regulatory compliance. And cash reserves, we didn't need to use those throughout the, uh, the second quarter.
What's the ceiling on the? Any rate from the mindset?
What's the ceiling?
Yeah.
There is no ceiling, I will take every last, uh, penny I can get from it. Um, really, we're kind of limited from the standpoint of how much we can produce. Um, we have, we have more customers requesting the, the lime than we have lime to, to provide them. Uh, so as we make things more efficient, we use less, we can sell more. Uh, we had, it's interesting, we had one customer, uh, that listened to some sales hype from, uh, another line company, that mines line. Uh, they got out of buying line from us, went to the other company. And they came knocking back at our door this year, but we had already sold their capacity. So now they said they want on the waitlist, so they'll, they'll back in when we have capacity or whatever. But, um, we have a high-quality product, which they experienced, once they went to the mine line, they saw the difference and they wanted to come back. But at that point in time, we'd already sold their capacity.
I ask that question because every time we make a report, it seems like we're having the increase in terms of lime sales, so keep it up.
Yeah, or we're trying, we're trying. The, the water supply and treatment crew does a fantastic job. That, that, well, it's one of two operations in the country that, that do what we do. I think we do it better, but I might be a little biased, but they do a phenomenal job and our customers attest to that. All right, so as we dig through some of the, the revenues, so revenues that, as I mentioned, was up 10.4% or about $3 million. When we break those down, city customers up 8.2%. And that's about what we would see, it's right in line with where the rate increases were, about 1.1 million. Revenues from other jurisdictions were up 10.2%, about 1.2 million. Now, the other jurisdictions primarily, that's the biggest part of that is Monday accounting. So we've got our cost of service agreement with one that we do monthly for that. So their volumetric and base rates were up and that's, it's right in near that we were seeing there. There was a little bit of bill timing. It's, it's very, very hard from one quarter of one year to another quarter of the next year to get the exact same routes and things like that. But some accounts were up a little bit, some, some were more red one, one time last year than this year. But in essence, it's, it's in the same ballpark, we're running about the same, what we expected. The revenues for other charges for services were up 40, here's what we're talking about, the 43.5% or $668,000 and some change. And that was really the lime cells. There, there are also in this category, we, we switched around a little bit with the other charges for services. I think Ken talked to you about that the last time. And revenue, we trued up some of the things that are each of those categories, so we're still tracking those things. So some taps were added to this category, but the biggest share is the lime cells. And let's see, revenues from, let's see, revenues from other revenues was up 4.2%, a little bit over $100,000. So we're, we're continuing to track all of these things and we'll, we'll continue to report out. Looking at expenses, personnel was up 6.1%. As we break that out, just under $400,000 was in wages. Some of the things that we, we looked at there were we had averaged seven more positions in 2024 than we did in 2023. We're aggressively trying to fill the vacant positions. And so as we look at the average, so that's what contributed to that increase this year over last year. So we've got the fringes, 141,000, insurance, 124,000, and overtime, 114,000. That really, the big driver in overtime here is operations and it's the shift work, where we don't have enough operators to cover all the shifts and we have to use overtime to cover the offships. Looking at contracts and materials, they were up 7.5% or about $770,000. Some of the big drivers there are utilities, really here, natural gas. And it's, it's our natural gas supplier increases that really generate this. So we've got a supplier and we've got a transporter, center points a transporter, but Exelon is our supplier and there was an increase in natural gas, so that's what drove that. Other expenses were up a little bit over half a million dollars. The big driver here were some projects. We had SCADA projects that were done. And this was for, we got a heads up from the EPA a little bit over a year ago, they did an assessment. After some of the things that happened elsewhere in the country, cybersecurity related to, to utilities, the, the EPA went around the country and did assessments of all, all utilities, including ours. Ours worked very well. They told us that we were already doing all of the things that they were going to recommend the first year. They said, but coming down the pipe was exactly this. They were going to want some improvements with SCADA, and so we went ahead and took, and took care of that. So that's what that, that project is related to, continue to refine our SCADA system. And also, we did some CDO training, we did, we're hiring that service now instead of doing inside. That's in conjunction with public works and other city departments. And for supplies and materials, they're up $65,000. Now, that number could have been a lot larger because of there's been price increases with, with chemicals, particularly chlorine on the water side, large price increases. However, what we've done is we've done a few things on the chemical side ourselves. For instance, we, we had our carbon dioxide certified by the National Science Foundation, which makes it good enough to use in food products, which like our water is. And so we're able now to use our carbon dioxide from the lime kiln, not only in the lime kiln, but also in the operations in the plant. So it reduced the amount of carbon dioxide we need to purchase by like 75%. So this number could have been a lot larger if it hadn't have been defrayed by the cost of order, so that us providing our own CO2 and reducing our reliance on CO2 by the, the outside market too. So, but that one little number doesn't look like much, but it could have been huge if we hadn't defrayed the cost with our operations. Well, going to sanitary, same sort of thing here, things are about where we would expect them to be. Let's see, looking at revenues, they're up 11.7% or about $2.4 million. Looking at city customers, below the forecast, about 1%, a little bit over $100,000 with a 6% increase quarter over quarter from 2023 to 2024, about $600,000. Other jurisdictions were above the forecast by 0.4%. Like I said, it's relatively where we are expecting, about $26,000. 6.9% increase, when we're looking at 2023 to 2024, $474,000. And really, this is right in line with our rate increases that we, we anticipated. The other charges for services were up 44.6% or about $1.3 million. And that's really basically one or two of our large industrial users' increased biological oxygen demand, the strength of their waste material, as well as the total suspended solids that they, that they give us that we, we actually surcharge for. So those things are up, I'll take them and we bill for when we have to treat it. So that's what really drove that, that higher number. The expenses were up 6.9% or about 1.2 million. The drivers there, capital transfer, as well as personnel and contracts and material. Looking at the personnel number, 2.6% higher compared to 2023. Contracts and materials were up 8.5%. And, and really, the contracts and materials here, it could be a little misleading, but it's really for projects that were completed late in 2023 that were invoiced and billed early in 2024. So that's where that really increases there, it's project related and timing. Capital improvement expenditures were up due to the transfer timing. And once again, on this side, we did need to use the, the cash reserve. So looking at the, the details on the revenue side, like I mentioned, up 11.7%. Revenues from city customers, the, the rate increase here was about 5.5%. So it's right about what we would expect, 6% is what we were looking for. Other customer, other jurisdictions was up 6.9%. Once again, right about what we expected. And that even is with a little of the bill timing. We went through and looked at all of the various different routes that were ran and bills that were paid last year and this year. There were about four different, but still, it's about what we expect. Revenues from other charges for services were up 44%. That's that 1.3 million about the, the large industrial users we had mentioned, the BOD and the total suspended solids. Looking at personnel costs, they were up 2.6%. Here, we averaged one additional person on the sanitary side compared to 2023. That's why the number is a little smaller, but still, we're trying to fill all of the positions. We're just a little bit more successful on the water side than sanitary side, but we're still trying to fill positions. And then looking at some of the other things here, overtime was really based upon the shift vacancies, like we talked about on the water side. And the fringes and the health insurance were where they were, 40,000 and 13,000 respectively. On the contracts and materials, the 6.4% increase from last year. Other equipment maintenance, these are the projects. So like in late 2023, at the plant, we did some pump rebuilds and some motor purchases for water reclamation. Orders those at the end of 2023 and they got invoiced and we paid them early 2024. So that's where the difference there is. And then also, we did some late 2023 improvements at the water reclamation facility at, on the clarifiers at the plant. Other professional services were up $264,000. It's really timing. We do the Duke's root control for our sanitary collection system to combat roots within the, in the system. And it's just the timing as to when they can get out and actually perform the work that we, we hire them for. And it did more or less one year than the other, but it's the same work that's done if we look at, that is throughout the entire year, it's just timing. Same thing with bill timing associated with the costs allocated with the admin cost that gets billed back to the sanitary. And sludge disposal here timing, we had two more bills in 2024 and there was also a pricing of about 5%. So that's what contributed to the sludge disposal increase, 1181,000. So when we look at, I told you it was going to be boring. When we look at everything, everything was about what we expected. Nothing, lots of things happened in operations like we kind of talked about, but as far as the numbers, we, we got what we expected to come in and put out what we needed to put out, but it was about what we expected. So total revenue for water and sanitary was, was higher compared to 2023. That's basically because we had the rate increases and our, our revenue tracked very consistently with the rate increases. And the little differences were really due to bill timing and things like that. The other services increased and revenue decreased. Those are those internal improvements, Ken talked to, to you about the last, last quarter. And while we're still tweaking those to make sure we get a steady state for those who are reporting in the future as well. And for 2020, 2024, personnel was up both in water and sanitary as we filled additional positions. Contracts and materials were, were up. And really, this was, as we mentioned, project timing and some upgrades that we did for regulatory compliance. We, we do still get these price increases and are experiencing those, particularly on the chemical side. And we've been trying to combat them with what we do operationally to kind of think smarter and work smarter as well to, to kind of mitigate those things, and we've been pretty successful with the CO2 as one example. And we've really noticed a, a decrease in the interruptions from the supply chain because that's been a tune I've been singing for the last couple of years. We just can't get things because of the supply chain. So that's starting to ease up. So we're starting to get back into our, our, our normal kind of thing. So those things have eased slightly. And once again, we didn't need to use the, the reserve of the cash balance for water nor sanitary. Second quarter of both water and sanitary. Any questions?
I do have one question. Thank you, thank you, Mayor. It's more so a general question and it just, thank you, Mr. Palantir, thank you. It's more so a general question and it actually just sparked from the, the general fund briefing that we just heard from from the team, the finance team. And so my question is in lines of the 6.8 unemployment rate that we're seeing in 2024. And knowing that we have a number of vacancies and we're all actively trying to fill those vacancies. So my question is in more so like, what are we doing? What efforts are being made to help reduce that 6.8? And it's not here solely to you, but just overall question in terms of like, are we having those conversations? What are we, I know we're actively recruiting and I know at one point, maybe last year, there was a wage assessment that was completed to kind of compare and see where we are internally in terms of the organization overall.
The wage assessment is being done this year.
This year.
We've been looking at this for a couple of years, Commissioner, because we've been having this problem, you know, since COVID, like everyone else. And so there has been cross collaboration across departments about how we advertise. I know that HR and civil service have worked really closely on, you know, job descriptions, barriers that could be reducing interest and as well as the wage inflation. As we've been bringing people on, we've had to bring on people at higher levels than what the job description entry level was. So, and, and being more creative, there's been videos produced and pushed out. There's been really creative flyers and recruitment activities as well as attending more job fairs and things like that. So they've been, we, we've been working at this for, and continue to work at it and bring steel practices and ideas from others.
I can tell you from the water department standpoint, and the city manager is absolutely correct, they have been super supporting us. And well, if we can find candidates for certain positions, particularly some of the technical professional ones or what have you, and we're competing against all the other water utilities and everyone, even private industry or whatever. They've been super supportive with, with helping us to, to be able to, to make offers that are in the range that can attract the, the talent to us. And we've been successful in getting some engineers and some of this very, very hard to find position. So I thank city manager for, for helping us in that regard. But also, we've been doing some things and we've involved other city departments too. We do the, we have a, a career conference each year and many of you have been, been at that and kicked, kicked that off for us. And so we've actually invited and other departments have, have been a part of that too, where we're trying to attract some of the high school students into the, into the career. The city manager, deputy city manager have connected us with Dayton Public Schools and we've been engaging with them with how to get students in for internships. And what we like to do is we like to grow the individuals through high school to have them starting some of these entry level positions right in, in our department. And if they have experience interning, that makes them even that much more valuable to us in transitioning right into some of these positions that we, that we have. And so we're, we're working with Dayton Public Schools on that, as well as when we look at some of the other universities, we've got some work that we're doing. Our Jackie Richmond is over our administration division. And she's working with Central State University with some of the key programs there, some of, I forget the doctors there, but a couple of the doctors there that we're trying to do some targeted internships with even the college students. Same thing for not so much the entry level positions, but the positions that require degrees and such, we want to attract them to. And we'd like to have them have experience. And so they're the logical candidate when we go to, to hire for those positions. They've already done the work and that, and that sort of thing. And we, we kind of start out young too, the, the water, Children's Water Festival, the fourth graders, let them know about what's in water. Boon Chaff, we're, we're doing some things with them. We're, we're trying to get the word out as, as much as possible that there are great careers in water. You don't need a college degree for, for many of them. And we're trying. And it's tough because we're just like every other utility across the country. There's a mass reduction through retirements and things through COVID and everyone's, everyone's fighting for the same people.
Yeah, so that's forced us to be creative, look at structuring even of jobs, right? Part-time versus full-time. So, because some people want to retire, but they don't want to, they, they want to do like 10 or 15 hours a week, right? And so we're, we're looking at all of those things because we know how important it is to fill these jobs.
Thank you both, I appreciate it. Do we have an expected timeline for the assessment? For the wage assessment?
Do you remember the timeline for the assessment that HR students? I think they're just getting underway, so I think it's something to be done by the end of the year.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Mayor.
Just wanted to add on a bit to the one of the things as you talk about tomorrow is the last day that the department is working with a bunch of young public schools. In fact, they're using one of your spaces with the water department. And that seems to have created a lot of excitement with those young people as well. And so that's another good thing as far as that's happening. As far as adults are concerned, one of the questions I have, when you're out recruiting some of the spaces and you look at some of the things that we have been doing over the last several years, and some of it noted by the surveys that we have that go out to the community, talk about some of the growth factors that we have, some successes, the aspect of more businesses coming to Dayton, and the aspect of new income rising. Do those things enter into the conversations when individuals are thinking about working for the state of Dayton?
We definitely
logically, I would think yes, but just, you have much of the conversation about that.
We've definitely in recruitment amplified benefits because the benefits, what we got in some of our conversations with employees that have been here five years or less have said, you have to emphasize your benefits more. You have a great benefit package and making sure that folks know the great benefits. We've also worked really more strategically about the career ladders or the opportunities that you have once you get in. You know, there's opportunities to grow and, and be here. I know that we've worked on those, Mayor.
Any other questions?
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, water. We'll now have our update from our Department of Aviation. And I know that Gil will probably talk about this in the presentation. Pretty exciting times going on at Dayton International Airport. As you all know from our previous reports, we aren't completely recovered from COVID. However, we are continuing to see great increases in passenger traffic, largely due to airlines bringing in bigger planes, airlines bringing in more new routes or restoring routes. You know, they do have a little bit of a pilot shortage they're working through. But what I want to really highlight here is that the airport team has been incredibly strategic on the investments that have been made and our on the investments that have been made and our airport has never looked better. And you know, as I've talked throughout development, you know, for the last twenty eight years, it's really important that that public investment, whether it's infrastructure, whether it's, you know, the the tending to the garden, places have to look nice and have to look like they have been invested in to attract other investment. And so the great work the airport has been doing, airport staff has been doing at the airport has led to confidence from the airlines into Dayton International Airport as well. And that's really important part. Largely, you know, they still have to get through their pilot shortage and their fleet situation and but the great team that Gil or the great work that Gil and his team are doing in managing that airport so that it looks and receives great investment and attention is making it easier for the airlines to justify reinvesting in Dayton and growing in Dayton. So I just want to say thanks to Gil and his team because I think they're doing an amazing job.
Thank you, City Manager. Uh Gil Turner, Director of Aviation, so just as the manager said, a lot of things, great things are happening. Uh our plans are moving in the right direction. Uh as of the end of this first quarter, we're up about seven point one percent. About three hundred and thirteen fourteen thousand passengers flown through our airport in the first quarter. So excited about that.
All right, with the numbers, uh I have to report that our uh total source is up about one million dollars, which is very about represent about six point six percent increase year over year. Now, total source included airport rescue grants are down a little bit, and that's the only reason why that's down. Sure, because we have not drawn down our final ARPA draw as of yet. Uh it's been drawn down, but it didn't show up in the first quarter. So third quarter, you'll see that, but we're doing well even without making that drawdown in the first quarter. So uh that's all good, good news. Our airline revenues are up by two hundred and eighty six thousand or about six point nine percent compared to the second quarter of twenty twenty three. This is due to more landing fees and more, as uh city manager referenced. Airlines are switching over from uh uh the CRJ two hundred small aircraft to the narrow body aircraft, which is like the CRJ sevens and E E one seventy fives and uh air buses and uh various other aircrafts. So we're seeing larger aircraft coming in, so we're collecting a little bit more landing fees. And we also did uh increase landing fee about maybe two cent last year, early this year. So it didn't go up very much, but still that helps out a lot. So we're seeing additional revenue there in landing fees and also additional revenue using the space rent inside the terminal. Non-airline revenues are up about seven hundred thousand or seven point nine driven by higher revenue from parking and other non-airline revenue sources. Our total uses have increased by about five hundred thousand or three point six percent year over year. Personnel costs did go up about two and twenty five thousand or four point four, uh four point six percent. But it does remain uh below our twenty twenty four budget, uh about five point one percent. Uh capital equipment costs are up about six hundred and fifty uh three thousand or eight hundred and seventy one point four percent. This is due to uh like uh Mr. Powell explained, that there was some equipment that was delivered. Uh there was ordered in twenty three that didn't get delivered to early twenty four. So the payment does come out of, you know, our budget here. So it's a twenty twenty four purchase order that came, it shows up in the twenty twenty four budget. Our contracts material uses up by one point four million or about two point uh twenty two point eight percent year over year, but remain uh hundred twenty three thousand or point nine percent below year to date. So everything is looking good on the positive side. Uh there are a few things we'll, as we get into the uh size uh of detail, I'll talk a little bit more about that. I could talk about the operating revenues. There's two categories we have is the airline revenues and the non-airline revenues. So um the airline revenues, like we talked about, increased by two hundred eighty six thousand or six point nine percent year over year. There's the landing fees and space rents collected uh this year. And the non-airline revenue side increased by seven thousand or seven point nine percent. So and this is a couple of things happened here uh with the uh we had a land sale down at the South Airport. We sold about twenty two acres down at the Dayton Wright Brothers Airport. So that accounted for that additional uh revenue on the non-airline revenue side. And here breaks down a little bit the components of the airline revenue side. We talked about the terminal space rents and the landing fees. So you see, you know, over the, over time, we have started to get back to where we were back in uh twenty twenty uh the terminal space rent in twenty twenty five, and now we're at two point six. So we're doing pretty good uh there, so that increased about three point nine percent. And then the landing fee side uh in twenty twenty is at one point four, now we're at one point seven. So these are, you know, all going on a positive direction, so moving in the right direction. Just, you know, still haven't uh fully recovered. Now the airlines now that as Shelley mentioned, are still struggling with uh aircraft delivery. You know, I'm saying they have a lot of pilots now, just don't have the captains, they're missing the captain. So there's a lot of, so you see, I read in the news that American Airlines, they're stopped hiring. PSA, I think they're, you know, asking some of their pilots to take a leave of absence for a little while because things are slowing down a little bit as as a result of the uh late delivery of aircraft by Boeing. So that's been a problem for them. So once they get take deliveries aircraft, things should start to cool back up a little bit. Right now, things are kind of slowing down and and also I think a lot of people are starting to uh go down in far as the leisure travel, so you're seeing things that kind of go soft a little bit over capacity. There are all the various airlines out there now, Spirit Frontier and all these others out there. So things are just kind of oversaturated right now, things are taking, making an adjustment. Get into the components of the non-airline revenue side. We have the parking, uh which represents about a nine point five percent increase. Uh rental car concessions are are down a little bit. Had to dig really deep to find out what was going on that with that because looking at the records that I receive every month, you know, that we're, everything is going up. But when you compare it to twenty twenty three, it's showing that we're down a little bit. So had to go back a little bit further to the beginning of pandemic to see what was happening. And because the rental cars pay a MAG, and then when the pandemic happened, the MAG was dropped. So then we made an adjustment and then, you know, when the revenue starts to flow, then that shows a a boost. So in twenty twenty three, we show there was a higher amount of revenue received in twenty twenty three. And then and then in twenty twenty four, where we did a uh the setup was a little bit less. And then also, we gave them a credit. We received the uh Chris O' Grant from the FAA to give the rental cars a credit. So that was kind of tricky to go, what just happened here? Why is it showing that we're down? And as I look deeper and deeper into it, I found out that was the reason why, even though it shows that we're down. However, you know, if once everything's all settled, we're we're on track, so it's not a, not an issue for us. Our concessions in the terminal, uh really, we was talking about the main ones are the post parities and uh and uh was the food and beverage and news and gifts out. Those are doing quite well. Um so they're up about ninety eight thousand and two one point uh six percent. And the other non-airline revenues increased by three hundred and ninety three thousand thirteen point three percent compared to twenty three. And this is again, we talked about the land sale uh down at the South Airport. So we're seeing that additional revenue that came in uh for Again, uh we talked about the uh rescue grant. So this is our final year of uh uh accepting a airport rescue grant. The final one is about three point six million dollars that we're going to draw down. Uh it should be uh shown in the uh third quarter presentation and that will be it for us. So but like I said, we're doing very well. Uh without this year, it's I'm kind of happy that we didn't see it in this first half, you know, presentation. Kind of shows that, you know, we're kind of, everything is just going to balance out for our revenues without the year, even without the year. The total, we received about twenty seven million dollars. Personnel costs, they're up about two and twenty five thousand or four point six percent year over year. This due to the annual wage increase, the step uh step increases for employees. And overtime cost uh overtime cost went down a little bit, twenty point six percent. And this is due to our uh temporary contract services uh and cleaning services that were assumed in uh twenty twenty four. Because of a lot of the vacancies that we're having, uh we've had uh Moonlight was helping us with the uh front drive with our policing, the short staff and policing. But now uh things are getting better. We're only down about one police officer position. And uh the cleaning staff is probably the weakest area we're having for us keeping cleaning staff. There's constant revolving door uh with the cleaning staff. We can never get up to the target number that we wanted. Uh so we're still using uh cleaning staff. So overtime with our permanent staff is is down quite a bit. Contracts material expenses, uh they've increased a little bit by twenty two point eight percent or nearly one point four. Uh this is due to like professional service costs. Uh they went up about uh three hundred fifty thousand. Uh again, we talked about this, just the temp staff we're using for the policing such as Moonlight and also we're using uh for the cleaning staff. The utilities went up about fourteen point two percent, also about a hundred forty eight thousand dollars. Marketing went up a hundred twenty seven thousand. This is, you know, we've been the Hughes retired and what she did, went ahead and paid some of those invoices upfront. So this is the marketing uh uh things that we uh contracts that we normally pay a little bit later, but she went in and paid them before she retired. So it's kind of preloaded. Uh maintenance costs is up about twenty five point three percent. Uh this is due to late payment of a bill then from twenty twenty three. My fleet costs are up about forty point one percent uh due to repair costs. This is the one that kind of talked about uh um airlines. American Airlines is our uh top airline. They handle about fifty percent of our traffic at the Dayton Airport that you see uh across the board at the top. Uh American twenty twenty ninety some thousand, twenty one, a hundred, a hundred eleven thousand, twenty two, you know, one forty six. So the point is that they keep increasing, you know, number of passengers. The only one, as we talked earlier, is Allegiant. You know, that's the uh leisure travel down to the Florida markets, such as Punta Gorda, Sanford and St. Pete. You can see that's kind of slowing down a little bit and we're not seeing. So we got to work on helping them uh market that a little bit more, try to get more people to utilize uh that service. But we're seeing a slight decline there, roughly about twenty nine thousand or twenty one thousand uh compared to twenty four thousand last year. So a little bit soft there, uh but overall, we're up, increased you know, seven point one percent compared to last year. So uh I'm pleased there, but yeah, I don't like to see any of our airlines, you know, uh moving in the wrong direction as far as uh number of passengers. And to summarize, our total source is up by one million dollars or six point six percent compared to twenty twenty three. And this is due to the parking and the other non-airline revenue. So uses are up by five hundred and seventy thousand or three point six percent. Personnel expenses are up two and twenty five thousand, this due to the wage increases. Contracts materials and other uses up twenty two point eight percent year over year. Capital equipment expenses up six hundred fifty three thousand or eight hundred and seventy one, eight hundred and seventy one point four deliver equipment and time of payment of item purchase in twenty twenty three. The property ended second quarter twenty twenty four with sources exceeding uses by a hundred and eighty five thousand five hundred. The apartment plans to draw down and close out the ARPA grant fund in twenty twenty four. That's that three point six million dollars we've talked about. Uh aviation will continue to steadily track the financial progress of the airport and ensure liquidity and operation stability. So uh a few things to note that I want to tell you about. If you haven't read in the paper that, you know, we did receive a two million dollar appropriation from the state of Ohio. So we're excited about that to help us uh and make improvements to concourse B. So that's exciting news and we just, before I came down here today, I submitted an application for uh a seven million dollar grant to the FAA under the bipartisan infrastructure law to uh get a grant to improve concourse B. So we'll put that to me if we get the grant of seven million dollars with the two million dollars, then we have a nine million dollar grant to make improvements to concourse B. So that's exciting. Also, um Senator Sherrod Brown uh put us in for earmark of two million dollars uh for uh terminal drive access road. We want to make improvements to the entryway to airport to that overhead bridge on forty. We want to make it spruce it up a little bit, say welcome to Dayton, welcome Dayton, you know. So I think that'll look really nice, so we're hopeful that we get that those funds for that. Uh you also probably saw the news that United Airlines did uh increased service to Washington Dallas. So that's all, all good news. So uh that's exciting to me, you know, when I see, you know, the airlines increase service and uh also the, just a a note with United Airlines, which is one of our, you know, greatest partners. They have really committed to uh us with Denver. That's that flight is still doing very well, daily service, and they send me weekly reports on how that flight is doing. And every week I see it's a seventy six seater aircraft and most of the time, the minimum is about sixty five people, you know, on that aircraft. So it's, you know, it's doing quite well, about a ninety percent load factor. So I'm excited that that continues to grow, that continues to uh perform the way it's performing. We should see a larger aircraft probably sometime by next year, this year, this time next year. So it's all good news. So also had a great uh airshow, if you guys all came out, I saw most of you there. So about seventy five thousand people attended, so that was really, really good. And uh so and we're working uh with uh for job, uh Commissioner Terrence Lawson, you mentioned about the jobs and stuff, you know, uh Sinclair. They're going to have a a a job there, I think it's going to be September nineteenth. September nineteenth, it's going to be at the Sinclair hangar. So that's going to be kind of good to to showcase, and we're going to have a lot of our equipment doing the same thing you're doing, Mr. Parlett, you know, with the DPS students. So they're going to showcase the various careers and opportunities that are in aviation. I know uh Sierra Nevada just had a job there, I believe it was down in Miami'sburg last month. So that's kind of good that they're hiring a lot of people. Um also, there's going to be an announcement uh at our Dayton Wright Brothers Airport, uh Wright State. Probably saw it in the paper, I think it was right after the airshow, they announced that they're going to work with the First Flight Aviation to uh start a a a flight school down. It's exciting, so I think they might have a press release in the next two weeks, so something might be coming out in this couple of days, so be on the lookout for that.
I think that we've had uh probably almost all of them locally started looking at some type of a flight program. Yes, I think uh Wright State is first in terms of doing that, but uh to the pilots even, so it's all a good thing for us.
So that's all I have.
Anything in the air for uh other uh markets?
I will not, we'll not talk about it right now, but there's always something. You're always in communication with someone, you know, whether or not it's going to materialize or not. I I can't, you know, say or not, but there always talks.
Cross their fingers and cross their toes and you watch your eyes, Ian. Any questions?
Thank you. Yes, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Turner, congratulations. Thank you for highlighting all the great work that's being done by Mr. Turner and the entire aviation team. Thank you so for being here as well. Thank you both. Um my question is in more solid lines of, I know often we're in competition with some of the other other airports, if you will. How are we in terms of the rates and with that being said, in terms of the competition with other areas, Cincinnati, Columbus? How are we doing in rates?
Well, uh in terms of rates, we're a lot higher than Cincinnati, Columbus. A lot of the uh their rates and charges based on the number of claimants that they have and the weights that they have. So we're, given the fact that we have less claimants, less aircraft coming in and out of here, then that that means we collect less uh landing weights and stuff. So and we can only charge the airlines for what they use, you know, they they use the runway. They use our our maintenance of the airfield, so that's the, that's how we charge them based on that. But the more aircraft come in here, the weights come in, that can, that drives that cost down. So there's an option also, you can subsidize that. So we could subsidize that, uh but still, you know, as you know, we're still coming out of our recovery financially. So there's no, there's not, there's no funding there to do that. But we are a lot higher than other other airports and
Thank you. Again, congratulations to you all on the great work. Thank you. Again, congratulations to you all and great work.
We're, we're all done. You're done. We're done.